Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any additions or corrections to this evening's agenda? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have a large consent agenda, a couple items that I'm going to have Mike Carman address. First is the approval of the minutes from the May 23rd council meeting and then approval of minutes from the May 27th special council meeting, approval of payroll of $83,379.68. We have a resolution of internship at City Hall, not Park and Recreation, Mike will explain, a resolution of employment in the Water Department, a resolution of employment in Park and Recreation, resolution for seasonal employment in Park and Recreation. We have approval of liquor licenses for the Hideaway Pub, Cafe Paradiso, The Walton Club, and Come and Go. Approval of total amount of claims, $529,116.43. Mike, if you'd explain to us the internships, and we had two on the agenda, one is out of consideration.
That's correct, Mayor. The city was approached by Indian Hills Community College Representative Susan Drish. They have a program where Indian Hills pays for the cost of an internship for youth looking to sort of job shadow and learn about a career that they may be interested in. So, one of the youth, Eileen Knoll, is interested in learning more about government and sort of the administrative side, and so they ask if we had any special projects that we could sort of teach, you know, Eileen and have her be a part of. And so, we've got several projects, from revamping our personnel policy, to reorganizing some of the filing systems, to pulling contracts, and organizing those that we think that will keep somebody very busy for the summer. So, we'd ask you to consider the internship. There's no cost to the city, other than staff time that would be involved in mentoring and coaching and training that individual. In terms of the debt service payment, the amount that you're seeing is our normal annual scheduled debt service for June, in addition to the refinance. So, the refinance that Council just approved is also included in this total 7.4 million amount.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Any questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Thompson. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes, with the exception of the May 23rd meeting, the minutes, I wasn't here.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes, but abstained for the May 27th special council meeting. I did not attend.
That's everyone. All right, thank you. Next, Counsel, we'll move on to our resolutions and action items, ordinances. First item of business is to simply set a public hearing for our 2016 budget amendment, as we do each year at this time. So, we will set our next meeting, Monday, June 27th, for our budget hearing. So, entertain a motion to approve the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, the action item, Counsel, is consideration of an amendment to our current janitorial contract, and the amendment would be an additional $400 monthly for the taking care of the Cambridge Sportsplex. So, we'd entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the janitorial contract.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. What was initially budgeted for that? Because this is a new budget item for over at the rec center, isn't it, since this is a bigger area that's being cleaned and that? Is that what this is involved with? Because I know this particular company has had this contract since, what, 2013, at a particular price, and all we're doing is amending the amount that that company is being paid for the cleaning service, right?
Correct.
So...
Mike, and in terms of whether it's budgeted for next year?
It is. I spoke with Tim during the budget process and asked him what he would be charging once we got into the new budget year to clean the Cambridge Sportsplex, and that's the amount he reflected, which is included in the 2018 budget, 2017 budget for Park and Recreation.
Okay.
What does he do for 400 monthly? Can you give us an idea?
So, all of the 30,000 square feet that we added, he runs the machine over all of that area.
How often?
Takes out the trash every other day. And then, they pay staff that they've hired to come in on the weekend and pull trash and clean on the weekend. So, that's what we get for that additional $400.
When there are going to be events there, will the event sponsor be paying the difference in costs for that weekend event?
That's certainly something we can entertain with, you know, particular events as they arise, but we can certainly entertain something like that. Counselmember?
Does it, do they do bathrooms, too?
They do bathrooms.
As part of that?
Correct. So, we added three new restroom facilities, and the family restroom, and all of the square footage of the building that they're cleaning.
That seems reasonable to me for that price.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, Counsel, we have an application from Agroindustrial Plastics, and this is to the Iowa Economic Development Authority's High Quality Jobs Program. Part of that requirement is for Agroindustrial Plastics to get the city of Fairfield's approval on the application. So, Mike, if you could explain what's in that, or...
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Agroplastics, very exciting news for them. They are purchasing three robots to the tune of $4.7 million, and they're going to add three jobs to their factory. My understanding is expand, this will provide them some additional product manufacturing capability. So, they have been awarded some tax credits through the state, and the state is asking the city to approve their application. Normally, there's a match on the municipal side, and we do that in terms of property tax abatement. This particular application, there is no match, so there is no tax abatement from the city's side. More of a formality, if you will, to approve their application. Very exciting for Agroplastics.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Revolinsky, second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Okay, next, Counsel, we will consider Sixth Street Reconstruction Project Plan specifications and contract. Melanie, if you can come up and give us a description?
All right, this project is for reconstruction of Sixth Street between Grimes and Depot. It's one block, but also, we are redoing the intersection of Sixth and Depot. So, it's a little bit more than a block. The bids that will be taken are two alternate bids. Alternate one is for seven-inch PCC, and alternate two is for eight-inch HMA. Both of these alternates have sub drains and modified sub base. We did increase the scope a little bit from what Daryl and I had originally estimated, but that allowed us to get sub drains and modified sub base under all of the project, and so hopefully to keep us from having the delays that we had during last construction season by not having modified and sub drains under the entire project. The project does include storm sewer work that will also help alleviate some storm sewer issues that Daryl's been having on Sixth and Grimes. And there will be no trees removed with this project, but currently, the property owners, the curb is almost full. There's almost no curb there. And so, property owners, a lot of them are just jumping over the curb and parking in the front of their homes. And I've spoken to one of the, I spoke to the duplex, and they would, they understand that they can't just jump the curb anymore. I talked to the other property owner, and we will be doing a driveway cut for them, even though they don't have a driveway currently. So, we'll be coordinating that. And that's the details of construction. The alternate one of the concrete, the engineer's estimate is $110,500. Alternate two of the HMA is $129,000, but the specs are written so that the lower of either two alternates, the city can choose to accept that. The bids are due July 7th at 11:00 a.m., so they will be ready for your consideration on your first meeting in July. The completion date on this is October 28th, 2016. However, if the project is not seeded by September 30th, they will be required to put down some temporary seed, again, trying to alleviate some of the problems we had this spring of things being muddy and it taking a while for the contractor to get back.
Thanks, Melanie. Any questions, Counsel, regarding the plan specifications? This is a public hearing. I'll ask, open the public hearing at this point and ask if there's any public comment. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, then we'll move to the action item, which will be to approve the plans and specifications for the Sixth Street Reconstruction Project.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Okay, Melanie, we'll roll on to our next project, which would be North C Street and Airport Tarmac.
So, on June 1st, you received, the city received bids for some resurfacing of steel coat streets, as well as some patching out at the airport. The patching was a result of the work done out on the terminal, and so, we left the option to be able to take that stuff out. And as you can see on your next action item, that a portion of the contract will be taken out, the airport portion would be taken out. The city received one bid from Norris Asphalt of Atamo, Iowa, for $110,450. There is only one bid because there is only one asphalt company in this area, so we would recommend approval to Norris Asphalt, or award.
And again, Melanie, this is minus what we are going to be taking up in the change order on the next item of business, this total?
So, you'll award it for the $110,450, and then the next item will take out...
$63,000.
$6300.
Okay. All right, Counsel, then I entertain a motion to award the contract to Norris Asphalt Paving for $110,450.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion?
Just question, Melanie. So, this has to be asphalt, then? There's not an option?
Yes, for overlay asphalt, well, for the overlay that we're doing, asphalt is the only.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I didn't realize it was overlay.
Okay, we have motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
After we closed the public hearing for the Sixth Street project.
Yes.
Did we follow that with approving the plans and specifications and the cost estimates?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm just trying to follow along.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Sorry.
You know me.
Me, too.
I can skip things, but yeah, we did.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, so the next item, then, would be consideration of change order number one, and that would be that portion of the airport tarmac.
For a deduction of $6,315.76.
So, we'd entertain a motion, then, to approve the change order.
So moved.
Moved by Revolinsky, second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. We'll move on, Counsel, to our water project on Liberty Drive. Melanie, give us progress on that.
All right, last item for me. On June 9th, the city received quotes for water main replacement on Fillmore Avenue and Liberty Drive. It's approximately 1,700 feet of water main replacement. City received four quotes, the low being from GNR Miller Construction of Washington, Iowa, at $121,536. Second was from Drish Construction of Fairfield, Iowa, at $124,892.50. Third was the Long Construction of Washington, Iowa, at $155,717. And the fourth and last one was from Cornerstone Excavating of Washington, Iowa, at $211,069.70. I have worked with GNR Miller before. They have also done work here in Fairfield. It's been a while, but they do have the capabilities of doing this work, so I would recommend award to GNR Miller of Washington.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a question. Did we implement a policy of accepting the local contractor if they were within a certain percentage of the, and is this within that percentage? This is very close.
Mr. Mayor, if I could speak to that?
Yes, go ahead.
I looked up the policy, Melanie, and I looked up the policy. Up to $100,000, we will award to a local contractor if they do not exceed 2% of the low bid. After $100,000, we award to the low bid. And in this particular case, Drish Construction is about 2.7% above the low, so even if they were under 100, we would still award or recommend award to GNR.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Counsel, then, with the recommendation, and also a thanks to the other three companies that did bid the project, entertain a motion to approve GNR Miller of Washington, Iowa.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you, Mel. Appreciate it. Next, Counsel, we move to our final plat for the Doyle subdivision, which is on 12th Street. This is a public hearing. Adam, are you going to address anything as far as the subdivision, anything the Council needs to know that's coming as a recommendation from planning and zoning?
We'll mostly answer any questions you have, but this is a subdivision that's been intended for about 25 years since feet of purchase the property. It's laid out very similar to the neighborhood, slightly larger lot sizes, so answer any questions you might have. It's right along 12th Street on the west side between Gear.
Yeah, sure.
Does the Counsel get a copy of this?
We'll look at, we have a copy of that, Scott, coming up in relative to the zoning.
I have the subdivision as well.
But, yeah. That map you held up looked like it was a zoning map. Was it, is it?
Do you want to go over what we're doing in there, though?
Sure, go ahead.
So, as he said, there's going to be some, obviously, right now, it's all agriculture. There's going to be a light gray area that's going to be, go from A1 to R2 for the proposed seven lots, and then current or future expansion with housing there. And in the dark gray, we're going to go from A1 to M1 for future proposed manufacturing, hopefully. And then in the lined area, down towards the bottom there, will be, that's National Guards expanding there, right with there, so there's going to be extra parking there for them, right along the bike track.
Sir, there won't be anything that's rezoned to M2 in that area?
The M2 section is the National Guards section.
National Guard, the lined area.
They're already M2.
They're already M2.
They give, they're existing M2 area.
So, there won't be anything in here that involves change of something to an M2 involved with what's going on with the rest of this development that's out there?
There'll be no heavy manufacturing.
Right.
In that M2 section.
Okay. Yeah. What is the R2? Isn't that be like a duplex type?
I think conditionally used duplexes, but these are designated to be single-family homes, is what our developers are intending.
Well, I know this is, I mean, I think this makes sense, given that, you know, you have a boundary between residential and manufacturing, and that piece of property has been under fetus control for some time. On the other side of that property, you do have light manufacturing with Sky Factory, but it does make, it does make sense to have that residential buffer in that area, so that, you know, whatever is developed, if, I suppose that, Adam, we're all hoping that this development is successful enough where it would potentially develop back further into that property, but for this initial stage, I think this is very encouraging.
The longer-term hope is that there would be a 13th Street cul-de-sac addition coming south, 260 feet west of 12th Street, that would allow for another 15 to 20 homes, if this works out.
Okay, thank you. So, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's anyone who would wish to comment on the proposed development. If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to a resolution considering the approval of the final plat for the Doyle subdivision.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Anderson. Any discussion?
Mayor, just one item of note. The resolution is contingent upon the successful approval of the R2 zone, because we cannot build homes in an A1 zone. So, I just want to make Counsel aware that the resolution needs to be contingent upon approval of the transition to R2 zoning.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great, and thank you, Mike. And actually, Michael, if you'd amend your motion to include contingent on approving of R2 zoning?
I so amend.
Kate, do you second that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, Counsel, we have a public hearing on amending the subdivision final plat for MUM Phase 5. I say our developer, Martin Brett, is here. Martin, can you tell us about your amendment?
This is a very minor modification. In the very west end, we had allowed for a street that was lined up with a street that runs through the end, or through the middle of MUM. It's called Granville. And at one time, that there was thoughts of bringing that all the way through, and we allowed for it in our subdivision, and we put that road right-of-way at 60 feet wide, and, which is not really consistent with the rest of our roads. And we wanted to reduce that to 48 feet wide, which is more consistent with the rest of our roads, so that we'd have a little more room for parking and garages. And still plenty of room to have a very wide, almost all of our roads are either 20 or 25 feet wide of paved area. Inside are much wider right-of-way. And so, our widest right-of-way for the main road coming in is 50 feet. Most of the side streets, like this street, Granville will be, are more in the range of 40 feet. And we just bring this down to 48, because we don't need to dedicate that much land to the right-of-way. It was land we really needed for some garage.
Makes sense. Great, thank you for that. Counsel, any questions for Martin?
Is the, you said there was one that was coming up from the campus itself. That's Grandview?
Granville.
Granville.
Well, we lined it up so that it would line up with that.
My question, though, is, is that a street that's only maintained and taken care of by the school out there, or is that one that if they ended up extending it into the future sometime from where it ends now to the subdivision, if that's under city jurisdiction for snow removal, cleanup, that kind of thing? Because we would want to remain consistent, I think, with the city's right-of-way, if that is a city street. Now, that can be a platted street just on the campus itself, which means it's not controlled by the city. And there's quite a few things out on the campus that aren't cleaned up or taken care of by the city. And so, that's just my question, I guess, if that can be answered.
There's a long gap between where we are and where the campus would have to join this.
Oh, okay.
So, that would all have to go through the subdivision process and work all that out to make sure that it's consistent.
But that may not ever happen, then, is what you're trying to say. Okay.
Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
Counselmember Hamilton, we reviewed all of the roads, and they will all remain private, and Martin is aware of that, unless they are built to city specs with the properly platted right-of-way. So, that road will remain private.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay, so, this also is public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any public comment.
My name is Jim Salz. I own the property directly north of the development Martin's doing. Got some photos here I'd like you to pass around. I'll tell you a little bit here. The property that Martin's developing here was originally farm ground. We have farmed the property directly north for over 60 years. Prior to the development there, that land was owned by Mr. Joe Malane. And at the time when Mr. Malane owned that land, we entered into an agreement with a property-lined terrace to stop erosion, because it was farm ground. Since that time, Mr. Breck is now developing in that land, and in the last couple of weeks, he is now grading a little more land. And I know this is not part of what his adjustment into the plat here is, but with the grading that he is doing right now, he is going to have a detrimental effect on my property. And I've got some photos here I'd like to show you here. In the first photo, you'll see it's a, what originally, number one, there was a fence-lined terrace that was between the two properties. And as you look east, you'll see a black spot there, and that's where he has put in some stuff to stop soil erosion, which is great. But that is a fence line. And in the second photo, basically, you're standing in the same place, and you're looking southwest. And at the top of the photo, you'll see, it's kind of hard to see, but there are some other barriers there to stop soil erosion. But the concern I have at photo number three, this photo was taken today, and it's standing on his property, looking directly north to my property. And you will see that that fence-lined terrace has been drastically cut into, and I talked to the contractor today, and I talked like it is going to be filled in, because there's been some miscommunication between the two contractors out there of the elevation, how things were supposed to be done. And so, the rise of the ground is not correct, and it's going to be filled in. But if you look at photo number four, you'll see where you see that water line, there is a water line through there, and there is a water line buried there, but you can see there's like a four-foot cut into that fence-lined terrace. And if you look at the rest of the photos, you'll see that there is quite a drop-off of, I guess you would say, grade towards those tile intakes. My concern is, right now, that if we get a heavy rain, like sometimes we do in the summer with two, three-inch rains, we will get substantial soil erosion there. And I have tile intakes down there, and if those get plugged up, that will be a serious problem, and that will be an expensive expense that I do not need, and I would request that it would be taken care of. So, as a result of that, until, and if you look at these other photos, you'll see how much that fence-lined terrace has been, basically, I call destroyed. And it makes me unhappy as a farmer. And I know Mr. Breck, we've talked before, he said he would take care of problems, but I do have a concern right now that it's not right, and until that problem is fixed with that terrace line, I would request that the Council table this request for at least two weeks, until this problem with this fence-lined terrace is resolved. And if it's not resolved, I will take further action if I have to. And if necessary, we may have to put in a larger tile intake line there, maybe even a 12-inch. Right now, it's like a six-inch tile line. But when this land was developed and farmed, it was not intended to be streets and houses with substantial more runoff. With houses and streets, you're going to get probably at least 30% more surface area to runoff, and as a result, that will be lots of water going down. All that water that goes there ends up in Crow Creek, and then goes through the MIU campus. And I know there's a study right now with Crow Creek, and the campus is concerned about all the water that comes down through the campus with the watershed problems. So, I do have a concern there, but I request that the Council table this request for at least two weeks, until I get some resolve on what I see as a problem affecting me and my farm.
Okay, thank you, Jim. I'm going to turn to our city attorney and see if, John, is this public hearing has a specific nature? Is this public hearing has a specific nature based on, you know, a specific change? Is this an action that the council can take to table it based on what we've heard this evening?
Did any of this come to plan initially? The original project did, yes. Has this been happening since the original? Dirtwork has just happened within the last two weeks. And I wasn't aware it was going to be quite cut that down. But like I said, there's been an error by the contractors in where they've been excavating. And I think Mr. Breck may be aware of that and would like to address that.
Okay. Marv, yeah?
Old change, surely.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there was an error. We cut more than we needed to, which is a costly error that we try to avoid. And we are used to putting things back that we have to disturb. We run sewer up from, originally in front of the big mansion there on B Street, 17 feet deep in front of high power lines. When we disturb something, we put it back. It's part of responsible developing. I'm aware that we're changing the water runoff situation, but we're also very aware of our responsibility. And our responsibility also extends to the state. The state requires storm runoff plan, which we've filed. We put in a silt fence, which Mr. Salz mentioned. But I think it's more important, you know, his concerns are important, and I need to listen to them. I don't think this is the forum to do that. We haven't violated anything. I was, once we get a little more farther along on our grading, whether what was put in there with his agreements with the previous owner is adequate or not, I think we should determine that then. I agree with Jim's valuation that probably won't be adequate. We have funds set aside for that. Likely we'll reroute. We rerouted already probably 50% of the slope so that it slopes away from his property. And we will make little changes as we progress. We have to bring the roads up, in a way, in this area where he said that we've cut away from putting in the water. We would have dug it out anyway for the water, but we dug it out and didn't put it back because of a misunderstanding with the interpretation of some older drawings with newer drawings. But my feeling is, this is a process, doesn't need to be come to a city council meeting. My phone book is very public. We can talk about it. And I think it's part of being a good neighbor, normal doing business. We haven't done anything wrong yet. I think if we were to leave the bare earth open or put water into his land, and he says, you better fix this, and we didn't do it, that's when you come to the city council and the city attorney and say, you need to stop there and intervene here. But, you know, I'm a good neighbor, and we have funds to do this. Everything is being run through engineering and state stormwater runoff. So I just don't see that there's an appropriate venue to work this out.
So what we've seen tonight, though, that large cut, you're saying that's going to be amended?
We have to fill that, yeah.
That's going to be filled in? And also, there's going to be a grade that will... Is that going to significantly change, or is it going to be a grade that is comparable to what was there prior?
One of the things that Jim points out is, even if we left the grade as it originally was, and we just put in all these townhomes, we've got all these roofs now instead of water...
Right.
Natural land that can absorb water. So we really have to think through this carefully so that he doesn't end up with a problem.
So what's your timetable on finishing that excavation and repair?
About two weeks would be to finish that up. And then, I would say, to really... And we have silt fences in place before we even started this. And then, once we finish that up, then I think that would be the time for me and Jim to walk the place with an engineer and see whether it makes sense to either, if Jim wants, rebuild his tiles to handle more, or to shunt it off to the water off to the middle of the project where most of it goes now. And we have that option. It'll take some excavation, but not an unreasonable amount for a project this big. These are... This is just a problem to deal with, not like, you know, something that needs a lawsuit or something to...
Jim, are you willing to wait and see what the... We've got dry weather coming up. Hopefully, they'll be able to...
My concern is, you know, it's just that I'm a steward of the land. And like I said, I've taken care of that land for 50 years, you know, handling me. And I just don't want to destroy it. And like I said, excess water runoff hurts everyone.
I think his position is completely reasonable. You know, I think we just haven't talked a lot enough.
I was hopeful to hear that it could be remedied in a short period of time so that we can get a look at it. If that would be amenable with you, Jim?
Right.
Okay.
And just as a point of, there is court law that you cannot, if the land is already there, you cannot substantially come in and redirect water onto other people's property. That's been court... The Supreme Court of Iowa has directed that. There've been some lawsuits. I've studied some case law on it. And so that is a legal law that you cannot do that.
Okay.
Just wanted to give out that.
Okay.
There's a whole body of drainage law. And I guess I'm curious, at planning and zoning, was there a discussion about either the terrace fence line issue or any of the potential extra water?
Gentlemen, if we're going to continue the discussion, can we do it at the microphone, please? We are recording. Thanks.
I apologize to you. This is new to me. I didn't go to the planning and zoning meetings. I don't know if anybody's here that did. You went to the first one, Jim? Jim's right about the drainage law complications, but that's a private neighbor-to-neighbor issue outside of our domain. However, when planning and zoning looks at these things, one of the considerations is the topographical effect. And we have parts of our ordinance that talks about if there's big drainage, we do things like retention ponds for Walmart, things like that, that get built into what we will condition the approvals of these things on. There wasn't any conditional approval on anything having to do with drainage, was there?
Only in the sense that Jim came and brought these up, and he said, we need to consider this. We didn't have a plan, a specific plan. He just wanted to warn everybody that he's... There's tiles in place to handle so much water. Please be aware that this needs to be addressed.
And then it just started changing?
Well, nothing. There's not one more water going on. We just started grading it now. We are finished with our plan. He's worried that we won't do anything.
Yeah. And I think the cooperation to make sure that the tiles that are in place are not compromised is important.
Right. And I looked at the plan, along with the department heads, before this came to planning and zoning. And we did look at, or I did look at the contours of the proposed area. And I had made a note that the way it was laid out, the drainage would be coming back onto his property rather than heading north. And so if... I mean, it sounds like things are changing, but they may change back. So it will be a matter of what's the final grade when it's finished. But the plat that, at least I reviewed, or the plans that I reviewed, had the drainage coming south and not headed north.
Okay. All right. Very good. So I think we'll go ahead with our action, then, which is based on... Any other people wishing to speak?
I have one more thought.
John?
And that is that if planning and zoning did it on the understandings of that being the drainage, maybe we should reflect in the minutes that what we're understanding tonight is that the drainage and understanding from the planning and zoning recommendation is what we're approving this on.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
I don't quite agree with you.
Well, if you represented that it's going to drain this way in front of planning and zoning, and that was the expectation of someone that was a neighbor that came to the hearing and said, okay, and now it's changing, but you're going to change it back...
There'll be some area in the immediate north that will continue to drain the tiles, but the bulk of it, the lots, will all drain to the south.
That's back into your...
Yeah, back drain into our project. Whatever it is, we'll make sure Jim's happy because we want to be a good neighbor.
Okay.
I'm not advocating making that a condition of approval. I'm just suggesting you show it in the minutes in case somebody needs a handle later.
Okay. Thank you, John.
May I?
Yeah, let me close the public hearing for, unless you want to draw, ask Jim a question.
I just wanted to point out to both of you that, as a kid who grew up on the farm, right now is a critical time. So even though the plans are changing, and they may not be where they are, but right now, there's something different, it would be very neighborly and community-minded to be aware that crops are in the ground right now. And now is the time that those crops are going to make money as they grow up. So the plans may be ebbing flowing, but while they're ebbing and flowing, you need to be aware that those crops are trying to grow next door.
Okay. John?
I have a question as part of the public hearing, and this is separate from the drainage. Martin, maybe you want to come up, because I have a question for you. The issue that Darren pointed out earlier about the width of the street, the right-of-way of the street ultimately means that Granville could never be deeded back to the city, or that portion of Granville can never be deeded back to the city, that the city would take care of it? Is that right? Without a... With a 48-inch foot...
48-foot width?
Width. That means the city would never take that street on.
Under our current conditions and current set of laws, that is correct. The council could always amend that, but under our current set of rules and conditions, that is correct.
I wasn't aware of that, frankly. The streets are... I don't think they will be deeded back, frankly. The side streets, anyway. But I was under the impression that there needed to be enough room for the utilities and the road right-of-way, but there was... And the paved surface of the road. So... And that with a plan or development, whatever the city wants to agree to, they can. That's correct.
Okay. Then we're on the same page?
Yeah, we're on the same page.
Yeah.
As far as Park Street or Avenue?
Avenue, huh.
So it... What is the right-of-way on that one?
60 feet.
That one is 60. And that we're still planning on that being...
Yeah, that hasn't changed, yeah.
And that's part of this whole... Okay. Just wanted to make sure, clarify that part. Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll close the public hearing at this time. And let's see, we will move to approving the amendment, which is based on the change of the width of the street for the Phase 5 subdivision final plat. So motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Seconded by Revulinski. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Grassmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So thanks for the discussion, and we'll look forward to a good result. Appreciate it. Next counsel, we move to our rezonings. And Scott showed you a map a little earlier. There are three areas on the map that will be rezoned on that property. The first one we'll be considering is from A1 agricultural to M1 light manufacturing. And that is the...
Dark portion.
Yeah, that's the dark portion. And that is, that's the area where Sky Factory is at this point in time. So they are... They exist on A1 right now?
And it's actually just north of Sky Factory.
Just north of Sky Factory. Okay. Right. Okay. Right. So it's, yeah, okay. So it's a parcel just in there and in the middle. So that would be coming in. So that would be contiguous to M1, which exists there right now. And so that, this is also a public hearing. Entertain any public comment on this piece of rezoning?
And I'll just note, this property was surveyed once about a year ago. Because we don't know exactly what'll develop on this property, we're following those survey lines to determine the M1 and the R2. It's likely that at some point, a portion of the middle of this property would switch from M1 to R2. So just FYI.
Right. Okay.
Or vice versa.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing at this time. So that will move us to the first reading of ordinance to rezone this property from A1 to M1 light manufacturing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, seconded by Anderson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign? Thank you. And the second would be the rezoning of the property 12th Street and Gear from A1 to M2 general manufacturing. That is a property that is being purchased by the Iowa National Guard, Adam.
Correct.
And is contiguous to their M2 zoning that they have now.
Contiguous to that. And the bike path, probably next year, is intended to be rerouted along the north part of this property line in between what they're acquiring and Sky Factory's property, and then proceeding west, excuse me, east and connecting up to Loop Trail again.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
We do have a purchase agreement signed with them. They would like to close as soon as possible. It's not a huge priority that you skip any of the readings, but I haven't heard any feedback from the neighbors saying, don't rezone this. So if you're willing to entertain that and move it along quicker, great. But the priority for us is the R2, the next rezoning. And I will be requesting that we skip some of the public hearings on that one if possible.
I'm personally not comfortable skipping all the readings. I would consider it at our next meeting if there's no feedback at this point, but I don't think it's fair to the neighbors to do it all at one time. I personally...
Okay. Any other comments on this piece of rezoning? And now we'll close the public hearing. So then, first reading of this ordinance would be from A1 to M2 general manufacturing. And Adam, your request is this is essentially just an extension of an M2 zone that is already there?
And it will not actually be used as an M2 area.
Right.
It's just going to be a parking lot.
It's just going to be a parking lot.
So it's just convenient for them if they want to enjoy the lots together.
Allows them to move forward more quickly. And I know you have heard from the neighbors we generally expect to hear from in that area on this. And they do understand what's going on?
Yes. We were at the P&amp;Z meeting. Several of the neighbors did attend. They have not expressed, they do not want to see this move forward. They've expressed a little bit of concern over the trail rerouting. And our current intention is to plant a row of trees along the north side of the rerouted bike path. They've also requested that the National Guard use low lights or low-impact lights, preferably ones that are sensory-driven. That's a decision by the National Guard. I have informed them of the neighbors' request on that. That's obviously nothing we have control over.
Right. Okay. All right. So what is the wish of the council?
I moved from the first to the second reading.
Motion to approve Act A1 to M2 general manufacturing, first reading to second. Revulinski?
Second.
Seconded by Hamilton. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign? Thank you. We'll look at it in two weeks again, Adam, and see if we can go ahead. And then the third would be the primary, the rezoning of A1 to R2 for general residents. And again, that is connected to the Doyle subdivision plat that you approved earlier.
Yeah. And again, I would note, we have gone through the hearing process at the P&amp;Z. The neighbors are aware of the intentions, most of them seem to be at least. Again, no negative feedback on this. This is an extension of an R2 area against an R2 area. It was long discussed about 25 years ago when we did purchase the property, that this is the intention to continue the residential use west of 12th Street. We did install a culvert and dirt connecting Gear onto this property. And we do have a builder that would like to proceed with building this soon. builder that would like to proceed building as soon as possible. So again, I would request that you waive all the rest of the hearings on this one if possible.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Okay, we'll close the public hearing on this one and ask what the council's wish is for this rezoning, A1 to R2.
I moved from the first to the second reading.
Moved by Revolinski from the first to the second reading.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion?
I think we can, let's look at passing it final in two weeks, see if we can get any public feedback, just to help move along.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? All right, thank you. Hey, council, we have consideration of an amendment to our home occupation regulations. This would be first reading. Darren, can I ask you to describe what we're doing here? Because I know you uncovered this for us.
Yeah, it's a, it's a typographical error. When we modified the chapter for home occupation, which is chapter 28.64, we had removed a whole section and didn't replace it correctly. So this is just, it's trying to correct that problem, and what we're going to propose is striking the entire ordinance and then replacing it with the wording that you see in the new ordinance, which is the entire chapter .64.
And its definitions, it's not anything to do with?
Well, no, there was one section that we repealed, but we had a typographical error in which section we were going to replace it.
Replace it.
And so that section no longer exists in the ordinance as it is, since it was repealed and never replaced with anything.
Which section was that, Darren?
Section 206430, prohibited activities. We removed, we changed the reading of that, the wording of that section to add a couple of more lines to it, and I can't read them the way they are here.
One we added was, "It's not transferable to any firm, individual, or other address."
Yeah, there was two, there was two bullet points. There was five total in that section, and then we added two more.
And the last one was that vehicular pedestrian traffic in excess of that, which is normally associated with residential uses in the same zone. That would be another reason that a permit would be revoked.
Right.
What does that, what does number six mean?
Can't transfer it to another?
Can't transfer what? The permit?
The permit.
Right.
I see.
So this was already decided years ago. We just goofed up in the way that we did it.
It was just a typographical error in 2011 when we did it. So we're just trying to, trying to restore that particular section 030 to the ordinance itself because we repealed it and never put it back.
So it was amended, it was actually amended to section 70 as opposed to section 30?
Right, right.
And that was repealed for some other reason?
Right.
Okay. So we'll consider then first reading unless?
Well, I would like to suspend the rules on this one because this is really not anything that is controversial. It's just trying to rectify an error that I discovered five years after we did.
Okay, motion to amend the rules.
Second.
Just to suspend the rules, I'm sorry.
Right, just to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion by Hamilton, second by Hallie. Discussion?
The only discussion is, how did you find this, Darren? What were you doing? Were you reading the code?
Well, I was just doing a general review of some stuff, because now I'm the chairman of the property committee, and it kind of falls under the scope of the property committee for home occupation permits and what's a legal business to run from a home and what isn't. And we had concerns from people that what we were charging was too much for their type of particular business, whereas what we're charging isn't a drop in the bucket for another particular type of home occupation business. And so I was getting kind of bombarded on all sides, and I started to look into this. And then lo and behold, I asked for that particular section of the ordinance, and there it was, right in front of me. Why didn't I find it five years ago? I don't know, but I did this time.
Good job. We will dub you Code Warrior. Good work, Darren, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, we have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
To suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules.
Aye.
Aye.
We have everybody? All right. Now we'll consider the ordinance from the first to the third and final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. Because I just wanted to call everyone's attention to the good news that we received a week, a week or so ago, which was the information that came out of the mid-decade census report that showed that Fairfield's population had increased by four and a half percent. I mean, our 2015 projected population at the end of the year was 9892, so inching very close to 10,000. And we know there are pluses and minuses there, but with the development that we're adding, you know, I would expect that we, you know, we will hit that milestone, we will reach that kind of growth. I went through the data myself, and I really couldn't find it broken down this way, but I know the Des Moines Register reporter at least reported to me that in two of the younger demographics, we saw double-digit increases in our population. So I think it was 25 to 40 where there were two demographic areas where we saw that. So I think these are very hopeful, very positive signs for the future. You know, workforce continues to be an issue, but providing housing is something that addresses that in a meaningful way. So the work that you're doing as a council with, holding hands with all the developers is very, is very important. So really, everyone's to be commended for the work that they've done to make our city strong. We'll move to our committee reports and board reports. Start with the property committee.
The property committee met on the sixth. Nice, bold, big piece of paper here. We met here on June 6th at 4:00 PM, and we had a couple items on our agenda. One was a utility bill insert, which Katie and Darrell were still working on, and we also discussed the contractor letter that we were going to send to contractors about use of the compost site. So Darrell and Katie are continuing to work on that a little bit. And then we also had our major discussion on the sidewalk and parking space dining, outdoor dining ordinance. And the discussion centered on finalizing or getting rid of the typos and trying to clarify some of the areas in the ordinances that we didn't feel were quite up to what we thought they should be. And so they're being referred with Michael, Hallie, back to the committee with Terry Baker and others that have been working on it to make those small changes and then bring it back to the committee, and then we can get it in final ordinance shape using Mike and our city attorney to make sure that everything's codified all the way through as it should be, so that we don't have different areas of the ordinance conflicting with one another in it. And when that's finalized, we'll be able to bring it back to the committee.
Great.
Or to the council, sorry.
Thank you, Darren, appreciate that. Personnel committee?
Yes, so as you remember, we met in March, I believe, to discuss the fire department personnel. We had an employee who stepped down, and as with all the departments, whenever we lose an employee, we want to take a look, as a committee, we want to take a look at that position and make sure that it makes sense to rehire, or if there was some efficiency that can be, can be had. I know the Water Works Department and Wastewater both lost employees from retirement and did not fill the positions. Instead, split those responsibilities among other staff and actually shared some of those responsibilities with both departments. So at the time in March, we decided to table this discussion until it got closer to the time that we were going to lose a third full-time driver while he's retiring in mid-July. So this is the time to discuss this. So what's on the table is simply, at this time, looking at potential taxpayer savings, if we, instead of filling that third position with a full-time driver, had some sort of part-time model where those hours were still filled, so there'd still be 24/7 coverage at the fire department, so we'd still have the, the fast response time that we're known for and that people rely on. But can we find some, some potential cost savings by not having a full-time third driver, but potential part-time? It's a little complicated because you have to have, first of all, the employees who are willing to work those hours. They have to be trained properly, certified properly, they need gear, so there's a potential that it might not save anything. But that's what we feel is worth investigating, so we're working with Chief Vaughn on this, trying to get some numbers. And the thinking is that, say we were to try this when this gentleman retires in mid-July, and we don't immediately hire that third full-time driver, but instead try to fill in those hours with part-time, and it doesn't work, then we can hire that full-time. So there's no loss in trying this. Again, we just feel that though we have the budget for that third full-time driver for this next fiscal year, that doesn't mean we need to spend that money. If we come in under budget, that's, that's what we want every year. So just trying to find those efficiencies, big picture, personnel really is the area in the city that we can find savings because material costs and such, there's, there's not a whole lot there that can be made more efficient. So when you have longtime employees step down, sometimes it is good to just take a step back, look at that position, make sure that it continues to make sense. In this case, of course it does, because we want that 24/7 coverage if we can have it. And we know that this year, though, the budget supports that position. Maybe next year, maybe the year after, something would change. So it's good to look at this, really investigate this kind of thing. I know for a fact, some of the pay schedule in the fire department's a little odd, and that's something that we want to investigate, right, Mike? So even looking into this may fix some of this kind of overcomplicated pay structure. And another benefit is something that Scott Vaughn is already, Chief Vaughn is already doing, which is he's got two new full-time drivers, relatively new, and a new model is to have those drivers, because they're, they're on the clock for a full 24-hour cycle, that's their, that's their model, assisting other city departments. So currently, fire personnel have assisted the wastewater department and could potentially, or are helping with code enforcement, which is Scott Vaughn's other, other hat that he wears. And they're looking into more EMS training to be emergency responders. So there's really, in a sense, value that can be added to the positions without changing anything. And so we want to help encourage that, just because you have the employees on the clock. If they're able to help in some other ways, then that's, that's more value to the city, to the taxpayers for those same positions.
They can leave the premises.
They can leave the premises, as long as they have their, their vehicle, they're still mobile, and it's the truck that they drive, and we call them drivers, they drive the truck that has all the firefighter's equipment on it, and they use what's called the swarm effect, where the driver goes to the scene and all the other firefighters meet them there. And that's faster than people having to go to the station to suit up and then go. So that's, that's the model of why the 24/7 coverage is important, but that person doesn't necessarily have to be at the station as long as their vehicle is with them. Did I miss anything?
Well, so.
So we'll meet again sometime in the next couple of weeks and make a decision on what we'll do in mid-July.
Thank you.
And we'll bring that to the council.
Thank you, Michael. Public Safety and Transportation Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a meeting immediately preceding council tonight. We had a packed agenda, we didn't make it through the agenda. Pretty much the highlight to bring before council tonight is that Fair Fest has approached us with their new ideas and process as they prepare for Fair Fest. They've actually come months in advance. We've asked them to narrow down and give us a little more detail and come before the next council meeting, at which point we hope to have an official recommendation to council with regards to their request. So that was, that was really the majority of our meeting. We hit some other things, but, and like I said, we didn't through our agenda, so we get to meet again.
All right. Okay, thank you, Katie, appreciate it. All right, I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business for the council? Not entertaining motion?
Mayor, did we talk about hiring Calvin Todd as part of our consent agenda? That's kind of a big, a big hire. Did we mention that?
He's on the consent agenda. We didn't call it out specifically.
Didn't call it out specifically?
Want to say anything about that, Mike?
Sure. So Calvin, Calvin is originally from Idagrove, Iowa, and he graduated college in 2008, and of course, we all know what the economy was like in 2008. Found a job in a field that he was passionate about in West Virginia, moved there where he was a parks maintenance employee, and spent several years learning how to maintain and care for parks. He was promoted to assistant director, where he was given the responsibility of managing the parks maintenance division and also their aquatic facilities in Marion County, West Virginia. Calvin has recently decided he wants to move back to Iowa, and he's visited Fairfield and really fallen in love with our community, and so he applied. And we felt Calvin would be a really good fit for the city and the department, and we're excited to bring him on board. So he will start with us approximately July 5th, and maybe just slightly after or slightly before, depending on how his move goes and so on and so forth. So very exciting hire for the city. I think he'll, he'll do very well.
Right. So as soon as, as soon as he does arrive in Fairfield, or if he's here on a Monday when we do have a council meeting, when we bring him in so that he can be formally introduced to the council?
We can do that, Mayor.
Great.
We can do that.
Thank you. Entertaining motion to adjourn?